Call to order the city council meeting for Monday, April 7th. First item on our agenda this evening is invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Ask for special blessing on all the public officials that are out here tonight, that we have guidance and forethought to what we discussed at this meeting and into the future. And special blessing on all of our police and fire department members that are here with us tonight and out on the street tonight, and anybody that may be sick or infirmed in our community. Also want to ask for a special blessing on those in the military, either in the U.S. or out about in the world, and if we could all take just a moment to think about anybody that we know that's in town that may need special thought tonight. Thank you. I plead the pledge tonight. Mark, go ahead.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on tonight's agenda is roll call.
Barazza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peeper.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Here.
All present, your honor.
Thank you. All right. Next up would be a reminder to speak into the microphone if anybody comes up to address the council this evening. And then on to item five, which is items to be removed, added or changed. We do have a request to remove item M from the consent agenda, and we will move that to item six A. So ordinance 2522 will move to immediately after the consent agenda.
I need a motion.
And we'll need a motion and a second for that.
I'm moved.
Second motion by Sulfah, second by Lancy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay, motion carries. And then we'll move on to the consent agenda as amended.
Your honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place in file the committee of the whole minutes for March 11th, 2025, the Plan Commission minutes for February 5th, 2025, and February 19th, 2025, and the Historic Preservation Commission minutes for March 10th, 2025. And for approval, the March 28th, 2025 payroll in the amount of $1,058,371.12. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $3,530,277.82. The city council minutes for February 3rd, 2025, March 11th, 2025, special meeting, and March 17th, 2025. The COW executive session minutes from February 25th, 2025, and personnel. Resolution 2025-46-R, authorizing the sale of municipally-owned real estate west of 122 South Van Vieren Street. Ordinance 2025-119, amending city code relating to construction of utility facilities in the right-of-way. Resolution 2025-47-R, authorizing the purchase of a digital backup and recovery system. Ordinance 2025-21, declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing the sale. Resolution 2025-48-R, authorizing the execution of a one-year renewable contract for the 2025-2029 janitorial services for the City of Batavia facilities with Bravo Services Incorporated of Mount Prospect, Illinois. And for approval, the 2025-2026 late-night Class A liquor license, Overflow Management Group LLC, doing business as Overflow, manager Brian Panazzo. Approval 2025 to 2026, late-night Class A liquor license for RP3 Group LLC, doing business as Riverside Pizza and Pub, manager Brian Panazzo. Your honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Set.
Motion by Beck, second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we do need roll call? Sorry, roll call.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
Thank you. We'll move on to item six A, which is ordinance 2025-22, amending the text of the zoning code for chapter 2.6 for ambulance service. Does anybody have any questions on that? That was what we discussed at the last COW meeting, just to change, to clarify things for that in the industrial area. Okay, if I could get a motion?
I'm moved.
Okay, motion by Sulfah, second by Lancy. Roll call, please.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Barazza.
I refuse.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck?
I'm sorry, Beck?
Aye.
Thank you. Peeper.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
13 yes, one abstain.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item seven, which is matters from the public for anything not on our agenda tonight. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to address us tonight? Okay. We'll move on to the good part of tonight, the rest of the meeting. All right, first of all, we'll start off with an oath of the office for probationary police officer, Robert Dase. It's first chief.
Yeah, thank you. I'm honored today to introduce Robert Dase to the city council for issuing of oath of office. So, Robert was recently selected by the Batavia Board of Fire and Police Commissioners to fill a vacancy within the Batavia Police Department. Officer Dase is a certified officer who joined our department after 21 years of combined service with the Aurora Police and Fox Valley Park District Police Departments. Officer Dase is an Army veteran who served as a cannon crew member. Robert is also a graduate of West Aurora High School and has an educational background in cybersecurity from Wobunzi Community College, and he is currently assigned to the field training division going through his onboarding and training. We're excited to have Robert join our department. We believe his law enforcement background and prior experience are going to help him make an immediate impact on our department.
Robert? If I can get you to come up in front here. Come right up in front. I don't know which one he's using. Start off with your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Robert Dase.
Having been appointed to the position of probationary police officer on March 24th, 2025.
Having been appointed to the position of probationary police officer on March 24th, 2025, with the Batavia Police Department. With the Batavia Police Department.
In the city of Batavia, in the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the city of Batavia, in the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary police officer to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary police officer to the best of my abilities.
Welcome aboard, Robert. Sir. I want to get pictures. I don't know if we got pictures already. Thank you. Let you introduce the next one.
All right, thank you. So, our next oath of office tonight is for Brett Chrissy. He's kind of on the opposite end of the spectrum. Brett is just starting his journey in law enforcement, and we're excited to have him, and we're excited that he's chosen Batavia for his law enforcement career. Brett is a lifelong resident of the Kane County area and a 2023 graduate of Aurora University, graduating with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Brett formerly worked loss prevention in Batavia and repeatedly showed interest in interactions with our officers during their prior contacts. Brett is scheduled to begin training at the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy on Monday, May 5th, 2025. He'll go for a 16-week training program, and then he'll be brought back and do the internal field training program here in the department. We're excited to have Brett join our department. We believe that his passion for community service and desire to help others will make an excellent addition to our team.
Brett?
Aye.
Aye, Brett Chrissy.
Having been appointed to the position of probationary police officer.
Having been appointed to the position of probationary police officer.
On March 24th, 2025.
On March 24th, 2025.
With the Batavia Police Department.
With the Batavia Police Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the cities of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary police officer.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties of probationary police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard. If I can invite up the fire chief, he gets to do one more.
Thank you, council. It's my pleasure to bring to you a full-time firefighter. Appreciate you guys approving the additional position in our new budget, and hopefully we'll be able to obtain a couple more. Throw in a little pitch there. I also am a little disappointed that we're now following the police department all the time. It's ever since we got River that we have been struggling to keep up with these guys. We used to lead, but in that regard, I have a lot of our members here supporting our new candidate, Nick Dean. Nick Dean is a local from Batavia, Illinois, grown up here in Batavia, Illinois, Batavia High School graduate. He joined our department as an explorer, as a junior in high school, went through two years through our explorer program, and then came on as a paid-on call and has done three years as a paid-on call with us. He has completed his basic operations firefighter and just recently his licensed paramedic certification within the state of Illinois, making him eligible for the full-time position. So, without, you guys don't want to hear me, without any further ado, we'll have Nick and his family come up. Nick is here with his parents, Carlos and Kelly, and his girlfriend, Kayla, and Kayla's going to pin the badge on Nick. Thank you.
Raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Nicholas Dean.
Having been appointed to the position of probationary full-time firefighter, paramedic.
Having been appointed position full-time firefighter, paramedic.
On April 7th, 2025.
On April 7th, 2025.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Project, Operation Support Our Troops Care Package from the Batavia Public Library.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary full-time firefighter, paramedic.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter, paramedic.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Welcome aboard. Enjoy your career. We'll take just a second, let the crew leave.
My son dated his sister for two years.
Oh, wow. Small brother.
Yeah.
I'd like to, first of all, thank all of you for giving us the time on your very busy agenda. My name is Liesel Ulasic. I'm the Youth Services Manager at the Batavia Library, and as your agenda mentions, we are pleased to tell you a little bit about this year's One Book, One Batavia program. This year, we have something a little bit new on our program, and that is, in the past, it's just been a book for, as we call it in youth services, grownups. This year, we're actually going to have three books. So, our first book is the book selection for adults. This one is called Good Night Irene. It is a wonderful historical fiction book set during World War II. Our overarching theme is World War II this year, I should lead with. So, that is our book selection for adults. New this year, we also have a book selection for teens. This year's selection is Salt to the Sea by Rudus Supetty's, and we also have a book selection for youth, and that is Alan Gratz's Allies. So, all very exciting reads, no snoozers in this pile for you. If you have interest, we would strongly encourage you to participate this year. If you have any kids in your life, I'd encourage them to sign up as well. There'll be multiple book discussions. Our friends at Mooseheart are also participating in the program, and I know Rotolo is also going to have a book discussion as well. And then, without further ado, I will hand the mic off to my colleague Kristin, who will tell you a little bit about some of the programs that we have surrounding One Book, One Batavia.
Hi, thank you so much for having us here tonight. My name's Kristin Zambow, and I'm the Promotional Services Manager over at the library. This year, we have a very large slate of programs, something for everyone, for seniors, for middle-aged teens, youngsters. It's really an uplifting storyline. You think World War II, and you don't necessarily think that, but it's all about hope and resilience, friendships, and kind of overcoming difficult times in the best possible way. And one of the important things that we wanted to do this year was have a donation drive for our troops. So, we're asking those in the community to come together with us and donate a number of items. We have an entirely long list of items that could include things like disposable razors, multivitamins, athletic socks, even little like books and like little books of games that soldiers can play when they're stationed either here or abroad. And coming up then, ending our One Book, One Batavia extravaganza this year, is going to be the Operation Support Our Troops Care Package Pack. So, anybody who wants to come together and help pack up all of the items that have been donated during the past month can come together on April 30th, between 3 o'clock and 5 o'clock, or between 5:30 and 8 o'clock, depending on what your lives and your dinner schedules are like, and just come together and have a good time meeting other people, being involved in a really heartwarming community event, and it's going to just be fun, too, knowing that you're going to be able to help so many troops. Do you have any questions?
Where are the locations to drop off everything for the comfort care?
Yes, so the drop-off locations are here at City Hall, the library, and at the Batavia Chamber of Commerce office.
And when was that packing date again?
April 30th. It's a Wednesday. Either from 3 to 5 o'clock or 5:30 to 8 o'clock. Yes.
Do you want the items donated before April 30th, or if they were planning to come to the party, can they still bring them with?
Preferably before. The donation drive is going to go through April 25th.
Okay.
Although if there are some people that just in their life, things are a little challenging, you can bring it on the date, but we'd prefer earlier just so we know kind of shipment-wise what we're going to be facing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thanks for bringing this down to us. It looks like.
Thank you very much for having us.
All right, thank you. Now, I get to call this the marquee event of the night. This is recognition for recognizing retiring Public Works Director Gary Holm for his 17 years of service to the city of Batavia. And I think it feels like more to me, since I've been the one that's been here the longest, and I've got to see him in action, and I've got to see Gary change, grow, develop into a lot more than just, I think, the job title was when he started, because I think he'll admit he learned a lot more about electricity than I think he ever thought he would in his lifetime. So, I'll let Laura say her piece about Gary. We'll get him up here.
So, today, I've got the great privilege of recognizing somebody who has had an extraordinary impact on the city of Batavia as our Public Works Director, Gary Holm. For the past 16 years, Gary has served this community with distinction, bringing a wealth of knowledge and experience from his time working for other municipalities, as well as in the private sector as a consultant engineer. When he joined us in 2008, he stepped into a complex and frankly turbulent moment in the city's history. We were at the early stages of our involvement with Prairie State. It was a daunting challenge, but Gary met it head-on with resilience, intelligence, and unwavering dedication. And we're incredibly fortunate and grateful that he was willing to take on that challenge. One of Gary's greatest contributions has been his steadfast leadership and deep expertise in the electric utility. I don't think that there is anyone in our orbit who has a stronger grasp of energy legislation or a more thoughtful approach to navigating its intricacies. He's been a consistent voice of reason and clarity, helping us to make the best of a difficult situation, and always pushing us toward more sustainable, informed decisions. One of the things that I admire most about Gary, and there are many things, is his intellect. He's able to identify solutions that oftentimes others might miss, and he's able to communicate complex concepts in a way that everyone can understand. It's been a tremendous asset to our city. That kind of clarity, that kind of leadership, is rare. Gary leads with fairness and conviction. He sets high standards, not just for others but for himself, and he leads by example. His genuine investment in the success of his team is one of the hallmarks of his leadership. He never seeks the spotlight, preferring instead to shine it on the others in his department. That selflessness has built a department which is grounded in mutual respect, growth, and excellence. Beyond the professional, Gary has also shown us how to balance dedication to your career with dedication to your family. To Kristin and Emma, who are here today, thank you very much. I know there have been many nights and weekends that Gary spent answering calls, managing emergencies, and always available when the city needed him. Your support made that possible. And we're so glad that you could be here today to share in this moment. And then personally, I want to thank you, Gary. You've been a mentor and a role model to me and a steady hand. I've learned so much from working alongside this man, and I know that many other people who are also here with us tonight can say the same. You leave behind a legacy that you and your whole family should be so proud of.
Very much.
So, on behalf of all of us, thank you, Gary, for everything. We wish you all the best in this next chapter. You've earned it. Thank you.
And I have one more token for you, Gary, here. This is from the city, and it's Gary Holm, Director of Public Works, in appreciation of 16 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Batavia and the Public Works Department, June 16th, 2008 to April 15th, 2025.
And I'll just say, Gary, the biggest skill that I think I learned from you was how to keep control of a situation by being able to take whatever the technical description you had to give us and get it down to where everybody in the room figured it out, or at least looked like they understood it by the time you were done talking about it. And that was always, I think, the hardest part of your job from the day you walked in the door. So, thank you very much for all you've done. Thank you.
I truly have been a lucky person. When I started in Batavia in 2008, this town from day one has been really good to me and my family. I'm going to start by thanking my wife, Kristin, and my daughter, Emma, who have had to put up literally with 25 years of me going to night meetings once or twice a week for the last 25 years, except for like the holiday period. So, it will be a little unique now that I'm going in the private sector to not have to do night meetings every single week anymore. That'll be a nice thing. Kristin was here almost 17 years ago now, not quite, but Alderman Wolf, you were the only one who was here at that time. You probably don't remember the meeting, but we still kind of chuckle about it, because when I stood up at this podium for the very first time, there was one or two aldermen who were not happy that I didn't know anything about the electric utility and how in the world can the city hire me? And they made their opinions known on that evening, which was, Kristin was a little taken aback by the fact that we had council members voicing negative opinions on that evening, but that is so far in the past now and long since. We've just had such good luck with City of Batavia. I need to mention the fact that I've just had amazing superintendents and amazing personnel in Public Works over the years. You know, certainly it's a large department that we have issues every once in a while that we need to address, but on the whole, you know, the guys at 2:00 in the morning, they don't have a question. They just come in and they get done what they need to get done at 2:00 in the morning because they have to get it done. So, I can't say enough about all the people in the department and their dedication towards Batavia. And one last thing, the mayor is not here tonight, but in his absence, I would at least like to honor the mayor and say, you know, thank you to him. By far the best mayor I've ever worked for. My senior staff knows that I've been saying that forever. He is just a great mayor to work for, and council, thank you all very much. Thank you.
I had one last budget amendment in him. One of those up there.
So, um, it will be a little unique, uh, now that I'm going in the private sector to not have to do night meetings every single week anymore. That'll be a nice thing. Kristin was here almost 17 years ago now, not quite, but, um, and Alderman Wolf, you were the only one who was here at that time. You probably don't remember the meeting, but we still kind of chuckle about it, because when I stood up at this podium for the very first time, there was one or two aldermen who were not happy that I didn't know anything about the electric utility and how in the world can the city hire me? And, and they made their opinions known on that evening, which was, which was, Kristin was, Kristin was a little taken aback by the fact that we had council members voicing negative opinions on that evening, but that, that is so far in the past now and long, long since, um, we've just had so, such good luck with City of Batavia. I need to mention the fact that I've just had amazing superintendents and amazing personnel in public works over the years. Um, you know, certainly it's a large department that we have issues every once in a while that we need to address, but a whole, on the whole, um, you know, the guys at 2:00 in the morning, they don't have a question. They just come in and they get done what they need to get done at 2:00 in the morning because they have to get it done. So I can't, can't say enough about all the people in the department, um, and their dedication towards Batavia. And, um, one last thing, the mayor is not here tonight, but in his absence, I would at least like to honor the mayor and say, you know, thank you to him. By far the best mayor I've ever worked for. My senior staff knows that I've been saying that forever. He is just a great mayor to work for, and, um, council, thank you all very much. Thank you.
I thought he had one last budget amendment in him. He stuck that he'll be here next week at Cal for that, when nobody else is watching. All right, up next then, we have the chamber. Margaret?
Good evening, everyone. What a fun celebratory meeting to be at. Congratulations, Gary. Big loss for us. Have fun in your future. I know it'll be wonderful. Uh, I just wanted to mention, as I have for like the last six months, an Inspire Celebration is coming up. It's one of the nights that we celebrate everything that's special in Batavia. So if you have not registered, please do. Registration's closing. We're over 200 people, so it's going to be a one, a wonderful celebratory event, April 24th at Revelry 675. I want to mention, we're continuing our Chamber Eats program. We announced it last month and focused on Taco Dolly. We will pick a different restaurant each month and offer a $25 gift card to the restaurant and $25 in Chamber bucks, so $50 in gift certificates, uh, if you stop at that restaurant and put your business card in or fill out a little, um, little card with your name and phone number on it. So last month was Taco Dolly. This month, we're going to focus on Pal Joey's. Beyond its delicious pizzas, Pal Joey's menu features classic Italian dishes, hearty sandwiches, and fresh salads. There's something for everyone, so please visit Pal Joey's this month. We will also host our Out to Lunch at Pal Joey's. That's a drop-in lunch with the Chamber members and staff. That will be on Tuesday, April 29th at noon, so come join us. I want to say, our Chamber Scholarship Program that honors or supports the Batavia seniors, we picked four scholarship winners this morning. They are, we gave each one a $1,000 scholarship to, um, their, the career choice or their, um, college that they're choosing. I'd like to say that Lucas Gieson won our Excelling in Entrepreneurship Scholarship, Sophia Hayden won our Women in Business Scholarship, Emily McHugh is excelling in Career and Technical Education, and Amanda Melvin for being a Batavia Chamber Business Contributor. The winners were all notified by email today. I want to again tell you that we are hosting our second annual Volunteer Fair at the Batavia Public Library. We'll hold, host it on Tuesday, May 6th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. We have about 40 not-for-profits that have signed up to match, um, their needs with the tri-city residents' passion and skills for volunteering at these organizations. Please come by and visit the not-for-profits and find out more about what they do to serve our community. I want you to save the date for our golf outing. It is June 23rd. It's a Monday. It'll be at Bliss Creek this year. Orchard Valley has hosted us the last several years, but they're under renovation this year. So we'll have it at Bliss Creek. It'll be a wonderful, fun day. Tea off will be at 9:00 AM. Uh, we are accepting raffle basket donations if anybody wants to help support us. Those funds go towards our high school scholarship fund. We also are accepting alcohol. It goes for the, the scholarship fund as well. The funds do, not the alcohol. I want to extend a warm welcome to the businesses that joined the Chamber this past month. We are delighted to welcome Plexus Worldwide--
That's what I was just looking for.
Somebody needs to mute. So Plexus Worldwide joined the Chamber, Lee Nails Spa, Lasser Consulting Solutions, Prairie Lakes Mobile Gaming, Complete Fence, Creating Space Therapy, the new owners of Bird is the Word joined the Chamber, and the Hollow Traveler are now all valued members of our Chamber, so please look them up on our website for more details. I'm just going to give you a couple of our upcoming events. April and May are packed, but I want to highlight, uh, this Thursday, we have a not-for-profit, uh, quarterly idea exchange. It's focusing on understanding social media, uh, data and analysis. So, um, that will be in conjunction with the St. Charles and the Geneva Chamber, hosted at the Geneva Library. On Wednesday, that's, did I say that was Thursday? I'm sorry, it's Wednesday, April 10th. Uh, then in that evening, we're having a Batavia Women in Business Networking Event at Kay Hollis Jewelers at 4:30. We are celebrating a ribbon cutting with BMO Bank on Randall Road for the remodeling project. That ribbon cutting will be at 9:30 on Thursday, April 11th. On Tuesday, April 16th, we have networking at Imagine Theaters, so that's a fun one. That's, uh, at 4:30. Wednesday, April 17th, we have a multi-chamber, uh, networking event at Eagle Brook with 14 other chambers. So if you want to meet, or if you know a business that wants to meet a lot of people in the area, come join us. And we also have created a Young Emerging Professionals Group, so we're doing a networking event for them on Tuesday, April 23rd at 5:00 PM. Go to our website for details. I want to, um, yeah, just thank you guys for having me. Before I introduce my guest, does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay. I want to now introduce Lynn Queen and Sarah McCarthy. They are, Lynn is the Resident Services Coordinator with Batavia Apartments. She's a very active member of our not-for-profit forum. She is, um, Batavia Apartments, as you know, is a 290-unit, multifamily housing community and is home to many of our individuals and families in the community, uh, that need Lynn's support. Lynn's passion and Sarah's passion for helping others and her commitment, their commitment to strengthening the fabric of our community is inspiring, so I wanted them to come up and tell you a little bit about what they're doing over there. Right up, welcome.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to let Sarah speak first.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time. Good evening. Thank you, Margaret, from the Chamber. My name is Sarah McCarthy. I'm a Resident Services Coordinator with Mercy Housing. I joined Lynn here a couple of years ago. I do live in Batavia, but I just want to introduce Mercy Housing as an organization first, in case you have never really heard of them. So Mercy Housing, Batavia Apartments, um, well, Mercy Housing actually is the largest nonprofit, affordable housing, low-income, um, nonprofit organization in the United States, and they have, um, different parts throughout the United States, but we're part of Lakefront, which is Chicago, um, other properties in Illinois, Aurora has Wheaton, and then Indiana, Wisconsin. So I'll give you a little bit of our demographics, and then I'll pass it over to Lynn. Um, right now, we have 563 residents on our property. We serve, we're a little special because we get HUD, um, HUD-approved funding to, um, help our residents out, so we can link services in the community to our residents in the state and, and other things that Lynn will touch on. But, um, yeah, we have seniors, disabled individuals, multifamily, low-income, and, um, yeah, there's 485 people on our waitlist right now, and if it's a one, two, or three-bedroom that you're looking for, you'll be waiting for two to three years. So, um, that says a lot about just affordable, um, affordable, low-income housing in Batavia and probably in the United States. So, um, that's about all I have, so I'm going to pass it over to Lynn.
Thanks, Sarah. Hi, everyone. Um, so I wasn't know that, I didn't know I was speaking today, so thank you, Margaret, for having us, and so bear with me. Um, yeah, Sarah and I are extremely passionate. Um, I think a lot of people don't know, and I know as a resident of Batavia for 27 years, uh, about six years ago, I was invited to do a fundraiser for Mercy Housing, and I really did not know what it entailed. There was a job opening after I did the event, and I couldn't, I, I just haven't stopped. So I appreciate everyone here. I think our motto is "Live in Hope," and if you're in Batavia, you know this is an amazing, supportive community, and it takes that, to help people that have barriers to achieve their dreams. Uh, Sarah and I do help. We have almost 600 residents, um, which seems surprising. If you drive past the apartments, there's 18 buildings, 290 apartments. It's a lot of people, and it's needs from children to seniors. So our day never looks the same. Um, it's an honor to serve everyone, and we could not do that without everyone's support. So we really appreciate, um, especially our law enforcement, police, um, it takes all of us to help one another, so I'm really grateful. One of the things that HUD does, um, provide is, uh, funding for residence services. And what is that? That is a social support system, so residents can make appointments with us. We see people daily. Some are in crisis mode, some are just trying to maybe graduate from beauty school or maybe get a degree. So we're really excited to help people on that journey. Some of our programs that HUD helps us identify as needs are health, so we all need to be well to go to school or work, so we provide the VNA visits. We have AID, which provides mental health programs onsite. We have Mutual Ground for Domestic Violence, the Lions Club with vision and hearing tests. Uh, we have an onsite food pantry, and that is, um, we depend on donors to help support it. It's not as big, of course, as our main Batavia one, but it's a barrier for some people that can't drive or, um, seniors that can't get there. So we really need something onsite for them so that we can help them, and that's tomorrow. And if anyone ever wants to volunteer, we love volunteers. We have an exercise program where Sarah and I will do drums-alive, or yoga, or we invite, again, more volunteers, the more the merrier. Uh, we also work with the community, uh, and I really want to say thank you, the Batavia Activity Athletic Foundation, Chip in Batavia, and our Park District. We had basketball hoops that were about to fall off, and we had no funding for that. As you know, it's, it's federally subsidized, so it's low income and there aren't a lot of funds. So they were able to provide new hoops, and that's exciting for Sarah and I, when we can take kids out there and play hoops, or we see some teens out there knowing that they're getting outside, you know, exercising and doing a sense of community. Um, Batavia Activity and Athletic Foundation also helped us saw a need for the children not feeling included in the school system, and by providing that spirit where they feel connected. And we've worked with the Batavia Food Pantry to create that spirit corner. We're all adults. We love seeing the adults going in and seeing that they can receive some of that spirit where as well. We provide financial wellbeing classes. We work with local banks to provide financial literacy. We help with resumes, employment searches. For our youth development, we have an after-school program that Sarah and I are very passionate about. We're hoping to invite the Boys and Girls Club. We're, um, waiting on some, um, needs that our building needs to have to make it appropriate for them to be able to provide that service. We have a Girl Scout troop, because that's another expense that parents can't afford. I mean, we think about those little things, so they've been, the Girl Scouts of Northern Illinois were able to provide funding, so we have onsite of mixed Brownies, Daisies, and Girl Scouts. Um, the BPS 101 helps us with early childhood screening, so we can identify those needs earlier to help that person succeed. Um, we're also creating a large community garden. I'm hoping that federal funding is unfrozen, so we can continue to make 32 garden beds, so that we can provide fresh food that the residents can harvest and grow. The children did this last summer, and they were so excited to grow flowers and give them to their neighbors and family, and we hope we can continue that, um, in April. Batavia United Way has set up a volunteer website that you can sign up on April 22nd and 24th, and we need lots of hands, because Sarah and I, it's a long day, but we're going to be shoveling and, um, assembling the aluminum beds, uh, on those two days. We also work with Water Street Studios, 4H, U of I, to name a few, and those are just some of the community partners we work with. The list is, of course, endless, and when we have a need, we reach out to Margaret, and she knows someone that maybe could help us. But we invite you to ever come see a tour of our facilities. Um, we're always more than happy to share and see if there's any way we connect and, and help people with those barriers. Does anyone have any questions, or?
Have any questions?
I know sometimes a lot of people ask us, well, what constitutes subsidized housing? And so the residents do pay 30% of their income, um, and so it's all, it's based on numerous factors, which is the leasing side. So we, Sarah and I have the fun side of helping people to succeed and, um, hopefully fulfill their dreams, but yes.
What are your biggest volunteer needs?
Well, right now, I would say it's the garden. Uh, we'll have an end-of-school, um, celebration where we'll have the VNA, they'll be doing physicals for children, um, dental clinic, Lions Club will be doing screenings, and we invite community partners to come. The Goldfish School will invite them and maybe do a water safety presentation. So we do a lot of events, um, that, again, if it's a barrier, a lot of people aren't going to use gas to drive somewhere, um, so a lot of our needs are even just helping with the food pantry or, um, at our events, like the gardening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
If somebody can't donate their time or labor, is there something they can do monetarily? Obviously, you mentioned federal funding freezing and stuff like that. I mean, maybe there's, this community can come together, and if there's a, I don't know if there's an easy way to donate, or is that like a?
Yes, on the Mercy Housing, uh, Lakefront website, well, it's Mercy Housing website, but there's the different, um, regions, so we're Mercy Housing Lakefront, and there, you can donate there.
Is there any way to know that it comes to Batavia?
That's a good question. Yeah, that's something I would definitely need to reach out, because there are different funding needs, such as our food pantry. We're one of the few sites that is able to have, uh, food pantry, and then we also have the Girl Scouts that has a private one that some, um, community residents have been able to put money in their account, so they could purchase the badges, is the only fee that they were charging, but still at $3 apiece and 16 girls, it does add up.
Right, right.
But I can get that information to you.
Yeah.
Yes, Dustin, yeah. And I want to thank Dustin, because he's been amazing at helping come to the property. He is, um, our alderman, and it's been great to have him help, and, um, we've been having some concerns within the community, and so he's been really great in helping, um, us help to figure out what's safest for everyone. So thanks, Dust.
Questions? Okay. Thank you very much for coming down tonight.
Thanks, Adam. Thank you, everyone.
14, which is the administrator's report. Laura?
Thank you, and good evening. What a great meeting this has been. I mean, from, we had a little bit of business in the beginning, but we celebrated people who are just beginning their careers here. We celebrated people who are, uh, retiring after having wonderful careers here. We, uh, celebrated two amazing, um, community events that are going on, both the reading of the, the books and then collecting things for, um, you know, the men and women who are serving in our military, and then also to hear about the great work that, um, Sarah and Lynn are doing for the residents of Mercy Housing. So I'm just really proud to both be a member of this community and also be able to work for this community. Just grateful. Um, there's a lot of good stuff going on. Max has been our, uh, representative on a King County Safe Streets for All Steering Committee, um, and we have been promoting that the Chicago Metropolitan Area for Planning has, um, conducted surveys, and I think that we must have had some high participation from the residents and, and others in Batavia, because, um, they developed a list of, um, eight different focus areas, and, but the number one focus area is an area in Batavia on Randall Road between Main Street and Wilson Street. And so, um, this, this is, um, the first step in accessing federal funding. Um, you need to first come up with a safety plan, and so the safety plan, um, identifies these various areas, and then in subsequent rounds of funding, it ends up in a project that will, um, try to address the safety issues on that piece of roadway. So we're really excited to, um, and, and I also want to thank Max for his time in being our representative on that. In communications, Lori created a website for planning Batavia's energy future. It's a means of being able to share with the community, um, all of the, uh, information related to the Brattle Group studies that are being, um, conducted, from the Integrated Resource Plan to the Infrastructure Resiliency, Cost of Service, and Rate Study, um, that we are doing. And then we also have planned a community survey for input, um, into that process and the development of a policy for, um, our future, um, energy plans. And also, um, just wanted to say that thank you for making the investment in Code Red. We've begun to use Code Red as a tool to communicate with areas that are affected by construction projects. Um, right now, for instance, all of the waterline replacements that are going on, uh, Bernadette and Carlisle, and, um, the residents there have said that they, they really do feel like communication has been effective, so that's turning out to be a very good tool for us. Also, the Police Department's 2024 Annual Report has been posted, so if anyone wants to, um, see that, uh, all of the statistics from last year, um, that is now posted on our website on the police page. Um, so there is a new restaurant that's going to be coming to, uh, City of Batavia, hopefully, uh, late 2025. It's in the, uh, same shopping center as Jewel. It's the former location of Kay Hollis Jewelers. Um, this is going to be a, uh, sushi, you may. And they have other locations, both in, um, Georgia and then also in Texas, um, and they may also have one in Chicago, but there are the first, this is their first location out in this area, so really excited about that. Um, we received notice that we have been awarded a Green Infrastructure Grant for Improvements, um, to the stretch of Mahoney Creek that is part of H. Michael Wild Park. Um, those in that area, recall that during heavy rain events, um, it gets really muddy in that area-- Each of us will be responsible for $185,000 of the cost, but the grant that we're receiving, I'm sorry, the total project cost is $700,000, so the grant will pay the balance of that. And then also in the Fire Department, as you know, part of their strategic plan is to pursue accreditation, and so Deputy Chiefs Lucas, I'm sorry, Deputy Chief Lucas, Battalion Chief Bocitis, and Battalion Chief Swinski, and Battalion Chief Hogan went to peer assessor training program that is related to the accreditation. And then also, staff are working on a grant opportunity for what are called Lucas Devices, and Lucas Devices perform automated CPR, which then allows the responders to perform other tasks related to responding to an emergency. So hopefully we'll be successful in, in getting those grants, and that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me. Yes?
I do. I was reading a report earlier, Kane County is doing some safety enhancements at rail crossings, and they identified Prairie Wilson as one of them. I don't know if you were aware of that. They mentioned smoothing it out right there, which is surprising, considering I haven't noticed any issue. I haven't heard.
No, I do, I do recall when they did the emergency repair work on Kirk Road, that was very, very rough, and the county contacted BNSF and asked them if they, and, and they actually did come out and fix it, but I'm not aware of anything on Prairie. Andrea, do you have any?
They have any extra money, they could just send that to us and we could use that to pay off some of what was done there.
Really good projects to send that to.
Yeah, I was surprised to read that, because I haven't noticed any issue there, so.
And then we are also, oh, go ahead.
Dustin, the only thing I know Rahat has mentioned, that they had looked at potentially, is it Ann Buran and Adams, maybe, that they were looking at? That crossing that they wanted to work on, but besides that, I believe.
We had a little ponding after they worked on that, didn't we?
They came at Webster.
Yeah.
And fixed that, but otherwise, I don't believe that there's any other crossings.
That's curious. Yeah, it mentions surface reconstruction, which is probably pretty unnecessary, so something to look into. I thought that was a bit surprising.
Yeah, if you've got any documentation on that that you could forward to me, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Yes.
I'm just curious, on just a little bit of the funding for the park, H. Wild Park, why we are making that contribution if that is really the Park District park?
Andrea can speak to, we have that Mahoney Creek.
Yeah, we have an intergovernmental agency agreement with the Park District, and we have, this is the same kind of thing we did with Winter Green Park as well. We received the funding. It's our waterway, kind of like our storm sewer system, so we have sought out the funding to work for that. We also, as I've mentioned before, we also have a grant application for additional funding. We just have not heard back from that, so we've partnered to make that more aesthetically pleasing, and I know every time it floods, there is a small pipe that goes underneath the path, and the Park District is always having to mobilize to put horses out there to block it and then go and clear it and come back. So to make it just more beneficial for all residents, we've partnered with them on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
This just brings up a good point, because I'm at that park all the time, and before I was on city council, I would just, I noticed all the, and back then, I didn't know the difference of who handled what or whatever, but all the sidewalks are, there's a lot of uneven points and kids with their bikes and, you know, scoo, it's really the scooters. The bikes go right over, but number of times, my daughters have wiped out, you know, I chalk it up to being a kid, but I guess they could be fixed, and I don't know if that just falls strictly on the Park District, or whether we, under that same intergovernmental.
I would have to look at that and see, so some of the funding is non-eligible, just like all of our other projects that we do, where they cover certain amounts, like the bridge in that park that we're going to be installing to go over the creek and removing the pipe. That is a non-cost participating item, so we have to pay 100% for that. We're going to be enhancing the area and putting wetlands on the north side of the path, and the Park District has already been in talks with us and approve those plans. So those type of items that are water quality are fully funded at the, I think it's a 75, 25%, but when there's a non-eligible things, we pay from like that bridge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other business for tonight? Why don't we make this one quick then? Because.
Alan, Nick?
I have a question for the chief. I was going to ask after, but maybe it's some valid info for somebody. Is there a bin in the lobby for old prescription drugs for people to turn in?
Yes, yeah, we have a. Sorry about that. Yes, there is a prescription drug box in there. Take all sorts of medications. It's open 24 hours a day. Somebody can come in and drop off medication. They don't have to be a Batavia resident. Anybody can utilize it, and we have been, in our annual report that we just recently collected in 2024, we collected almost 800 pounds of unused medications. So it's a really good program, keeps those medications out of water systems and things like that, so it's a great program, and we encourage everyone to use it.
Awesome, thank you. Is there a preferred way to put the drugs in there? I mean, do you keep them in the prescription bottles, dump them in a bag? Is there?
They can be left, we have a new vendor now, they can be left in the packaging and deposited in there. The records clerk who's working behind the window, given specific instructions. If there are certain items that need a special kind of packaging, we can assist with that, but other than that, no, there's not, there's not a lot of requirements in terms of packaging.
Thank you.
Dustin?
Do you also take veterinary medications?
Probably.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any else? Okay, under the, the mayor's report, I can make that really short, because I'm not going to give one. I don't have any great stories to tell tonight or anything else. I'm saving that for the next meeting, when everybody that leaves on that side, I'm picking out stories I'm going to talk about for that. So anybody else wants to think about that, if you don't want to read them, I'll read them. Write them down, bring them in, I'll read them. And I just say, just because tonight, we're not under any kind of rush, it has been really good to have the, the different people that we've had on the council over the years, and those of you that are leaving. I'm just really happy that we've had different people from different walks of life that have always been willing to share what they think about whatever issues we're talking about. So that's something that's been really good, and I've always kind of credited the mayor, that somehow he kind of keeps us focused on trying to just stay on those issues, not worry about outside politics, not worry about, you know, things that happen in other towns or things that don't happen here, but just to work on what we need to work on. So for that, I'm really happy to have the people that we've had here. On that, I'll look for a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Motion myself a second by.